Rail trail and the river.
All right, I'll call us back to order. If you... Does anybody want to have public comments who has not signed up? All right, we're going to get a little bit of out of order. I want to make the presentation. And for in honor of Keith Bochott. We did... So at the board with some words. This is our resolution. For five. That's... Chris... Shortest time through. Office. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Bye. That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Stop. Okay. We have Chris Pruding from Blue Ridge.
Good evening, everybody. I am here on behalf of One Family Productions just for a couple of reasons. First one, I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors in the County of Patrick for continuing to support our organization, all of our events that we have throughout the year. It was a very successful year for us, and we always appreciate the help. If it wasn't for the county and entities like Tourism and The Chamber and many others, we don't know if we could still exist, and we do appreciate that. And I also really come on behalf of One Family Productions to talk to you this year today about this year's Patrick County Christmas Parade. It is the 50th Annual Patrick County Christmas Parade that will take place on December the 2nd here in Stewart, Virginia, with this year's theme being Through the Decades. The reason that being is because, again, it is the 50th year. We had some great members of the organization do a lot of homework to find out truly what the history is of the Patrick County Christmas Parade, how long it's been going on, and got a lot of good information about that. And come to find out that in the early 60s, it was the original parade, and that parade happened, I believe, one time, and then it went on for about 10 years before it happened again. And that was thanks to Nisa's father, Mr. Litten, and his/her mother, Mrs. Litten, who moved up here from Texas in 1969, and had the good idea of kind of talking to Buddy Williams and had the idea of bringing the parade back. And Mr. Williams said, well, we still have the sleigh that is 10 years old from the first parade, and actually, that's still the sleigh that we use to this very day. And he said, I'll make you a deal if I buy the Santa suit and you play Santa, then we'll bring the parade back. So the parade came back under the leadership of Mr. Litten, along with Bill Pons, the late great Bill Pons, along with Bruce Griffith and many others in 1971. And in 1972, it got deemed the annual Christmas Parade, and this is when the J.C.'s really took hold, the local chapter here in Patrick County, and have been doing it for many years since. A lot of great chairs, including Mr. Pons, Bruce Griffith, Ronnie Haley, my mother Anita Pruding, Galen Gilbert. A lot of prominent citizens of this county have been a part of this parade and had a big hand in making this parade happen to this day. We took over about four or five years ago when Galen was done. The J.C. chapter here in Patrick County pretty much had folded at that time. I was pretty much under his tutelage for many years before that, helping him do the parade, and then One Family took it over a few years back. And so this year, we are very happy to pronounce or present the 50th Annual Patrick County Christmas Parade, and I am really just here to invite all of you to be a part of this parade, anybody in this room that would like to be a part of it, because we're trying to get as many people as we can get to come out and celebrate this parade this year, because we think it's a really huge milestone for this parade to be going on as long as it has. And, you know, I've had the honor to go around a few other Christmas parades already this year, and although they are very well and done and really great for those communities, I still think that we have one of the best ones out there. And so it's all part of the hometown Christmas that takes place here in the county, that The Chamber and ourselves, along with Tourism. A lot of people really come together to put on these events, to give everybody that hallmark Christmas that we all kind of look for towards every single year. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to approach the bench and just give you out some packets and, again, just invite you all to come. The board, there's no fee, because you are serving the county, and we do appreciate that. And also, you could pass that along to anybody in your district and say, hey, you should come out for this. And I'll remind everybody that there is another great parade taking place this Saturday in Meadows' Dam, and you should go to that on Small Business Saturday as well. So I'm going to approach the board, and I'm going to say thank you, and I'm going to leave.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. We appreciate you taking it over, so...
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kria.
All right, thank you. We have Rebecca Adcock.
Good evening. I'm here with the Chamber of Commerce just to give you a quick update from the summer and through the fall. The Chamber was busy, of course. A lot of our summer events really got kicked off, so having to help promote all of those through social media, website, as well as our direct email list. We worked with West Pymont to finish up on the Foodbox Grant, buying fresh food at the farmer's market for our senior citizens. And then also, we attended the Tourism Luncheon with Southwest Virginia, and where the Chamber won an award, and Tourism won several awards for their marketing efforts for the county. Still working with Hill Studio on the Downtown Revitalization Project that is part of the County EDA program. And then also, still working on Dolly Parton Imagination Library. We're in the final stages of signature, so we can get that going and rolling through next year with the book program for kids 0 to 5 in the county. Bayer came back, and of course, Apple Dumplin Festival with the 5K. We had over, or close to 100 runners, and a lot of them came in from surrounding areas to run the 5K and then stay for the event. We hosted the inaugural breakfast with community leaders. Many of you attended or spoke. Thank you for that, and it was a great success. A lot of people are looking forward to next year. Stuart's Spooktacular, we held off on the rain right up until 6:15 with the event starting at 6:30. We were all soaked, but the event went off without much rain. And then assisting the public input with the Town Comprehensive Plan and meeting with potential new business owners who are looking to start businesses in and around the county. So the wrap-up for the rest of this year, of course, is working with One Family Productions with the parade and then all the hometown events. That day is actually packed full of pretty much seven different activities going on on Saturday leading up to the parade. So we hope you guys will join us for a lot of that. And then also promotion of the Small Business Saturday, like Chris mentioned, the Mezzedan Parade on November 26th, and the shopping up in Mezzedan. Festival of Lights is coming back, and they do have almost double the amount of displays that they had last year, with businesses and organizations, individuals wanting to set up, so that will kick off on December 10th through the 18th. The Chamber is hosting the Business After Hours. Hopefully, you guys have received those emails to sign up. That is December 8th at Reynolds Homestead. Finished up the Fall Magazine and starting to work on the Spring '23 Magazine, and then, of course, 2023 Membership Drive. So I sent this... I'll need to resend it to fix my typos, but I will send this to Amy, and she can include it in your minutes. So if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Hey, anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. Kurt Bosemeyer.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Bosemeyer. I'm from the Smith River District, and I would like to address the board regarding changes upcoming for the Tourism Department. I see that an item on tonight's agenda for the Executive Session will address the Tourism and Recreation Coordinator. I was appointed to the Tourism Advisory Council in June of last year and have worked with Mr. James Houchens since his county position was expanded to include tourism in addition to his recreation duties. I am pleased to report that Mr. Houchens has enthusiastically embraced his new duties, has worked very well with the council, and has some innovative ideas for the expansion and improvement of the Tourism Department. Also encouraging is the fact that revenues received from the transient occupancy tax have recovered from the COVID crisis and have substantially increased over the last two years, to the extent that the county is showing a surplus in the transient occupancy tax fund for the last two years. I understand that the county budget process has been conservative for the Tourism Department since the departure of the previous Tourism Director, but I don't feel that a satisfactory explanation was ever advanced for the conversion of the two full-time tourism positions to two part-time positions. While the county administration may feel that an explanation is not owed to the public, I am concerned that the issue was never discussed with the Tourism Advisory Council. When I raised this question with the Supervisor Liaison to the Tourism Advisory Council, I was told that this was a personnel issue and is handled confidentially within Executive Session by the Supervisors. I understand that issues regarding the performance and compensation of individual employees are appropriately kept confidential, but I feel that the question of whether a department is adequately staffed does not fall into that category, especially when the salaries and expenses of that department are not borne by the county taxpayers, but instead come from transient occupancy tax fund that is currently showing a surplus of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Mr. Houchens is poised to present several innovative ideas to improve tourism in Patrick County, and it is my hope that the county administration will work with Mr. Houchens and the Tourism Advisory Council to allocate some of that fund surplus to these projects without delaying them to the fiscal year 2024 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then I will close public comment. Thank you. We have Ms. Lisa Hughes.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. I wanted to start off, you may have noticed some signs going up, some weight limit signs on our bridges around the county, and spoke briefly to Ms. Hazelwood, and she asked that I give you an update of exactly what we're doing. And bear with me here, and I'll try to give you a little history on what we're doing, but really, basically, over the last 20 years, emergency vehicles have gotten bigger and heavier. And under federal law that was enacted in 2015, these heavier vehicles, they became legal loads in Virginia. And this change meant that those vehicles could legally be driven on Virginia roadways and cross bridges that VDOT actually hadn't load rated for those heavy loads. So the Federal Highway Administration, or FHWA, has updated the bridge standards, federal bridge standards, and now requires that those bridges be evaluated to determine if weight restrictions should be set or adjusted for emergency vehicle. And now, the carrying capacity of these bridges, in many cases, has not changed, but because heavier vehicles can now legally use them, we've got to analyze all our bridges and post them accordingly with a weight limit. And we started this late last year, early this year, and we've been posting weight restriction signs related to these vehicles where needed. Now, Patrick County has quite a few, as do most other counties, and what we have been required to do, and what I've done with Jerry, send her notifications of which bridges have been posted and what weight limits they're posting at, those and your 911 coordinator. And our deadline for analyzing these bridges and posting them accordingly is December 31st, so we're about to wrap that up for the... But the good news is that our newer bridges, they're being designed for those heavier loads, a fire truck with ladder, you know, full blown, about 86,000 pounds. So, but if you have any questions or have any concerns about a rating that we posted, just feel free to let me know, and I'll try my best to explain it.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I had one question for you, Lisa. In the documents that you sent in for our review, the... Some of them don't have a current or new posted capacity. You will have those posted by December, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Because they don't have any at all?
Yes.
Okay. And then the others, are there any updates?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm I was reading things right.
Yes, you're exactly right. It's a little confusing. If they're not posted currently, they get a... Or if they are posted currently, then they'll get a little supplemental plaque to go with the bottom, and this is separate from all the commercial postings we got, just pertaining strictly to emergency vehicle. Fire trucks more specifically.
Anybody else?
I've got a question outside the bridges, and I think someone from Smith River has asked you about this, but how would we go about study to see about posted speed limit on Goose Point Road?
We... VDOT can do that. I mean, you're requesting it, we have looked at it. I will tell you several times, and I can get with you to go over the specifics, but yes, we've done that.
Perfect, thank you.
And yeah, just a couple of things. If anybody has any questions on the bridges, I've just got a couple of project updates. I wanted to... I know I may have gone over these with you a few meetings ago, but we do have one new old project, and that's improvements, safety improvements to 773. And that project, gosh, it's been a six-year plan forever. And it seems like the, you know, we just... This was pre-smart scale, so we couldn't transfer that money and use it or anything else. We had to keep it on 773, and costs have gone up, but our money still stayed the same, so we have struggled with how best wisely to use that money. But it was designated for a section of 773 from Lowwater Bridge Road to Hooker Creek Road, and what we have developed is a safety project to widen the shoulders there. We're going to replace pipes, widen shoulders, upgrade guard rail for like a mile and a quarter section. So it's an estimated cost of $1.4 million. And also, the last time I was here, we did not really have a advertisement date for the improvements to the 103-645 intersection, and now we do. And we expect that project to be advertised for bids in the fall of 2023 with work coming in 2024. And that's all I have.
All right. Anybody else have any comments, questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. James Houchens.
Good afternoon. I hope that you do have in your board packet a quick synopsis or information pertaining to the VA America's Revolution 250 Commission that they have formed. And what I just wanted to go over with you all tonight is, this commission was established by the General Assembly in 2020 as an anniversary commission in the executive branch for the purpose of celebrating or commemorating the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution, the Revolutionary War, and the Independence of the United States. What I'm asking for tonight is a resolution from the county so that we can be a part of that celebration. What that would entail is, is once you sign the resolution and we become a part of it, it opens up funding for us through the VTC, Virginia Tourism Corporation, to help us with the celebration of that. This is going to be a multi-year celebration. The main year, of course, is going to be 2026, when we actually get a chance to celebrate the signing of the Declaration of Independence. Following that, they're going to continue to have other milestone events throughout the United States. But what's most important about it is the amount of history that we have here in Virginia concerning our beginning as these great United States. And what I'm asking for tonight, again, is that resolution to be signed so that we can actually be a part of it. While I was at the VA Conference in Norfolk, I hope all of you all had seen some of the comments that our governor had made, and what he's wanting us to do is really to focus even more heavily on tourism. And this is going to be an ongoing project that would actually help bring more individuals into this community, into this county, because we do play such a pivotal part in the history of the United States. In these celebrations, we're going to be inclusive. We'll be taking a look at all diversities of individuals that actually was a part of it. There's a whole big file that if any of you all would like to research it, to look up on it, how we can commemorate this. They're forming it every day on different events, but what I plan on doing during the Tourism Department is, is to take their advice as we move further into these years upcoming. You will see celebrations with different individuals here, whether it's through the schools, through our history departments, or either through the library, through our Historical Society, and through all of those who know the history of Patrick County. And that's one of the things that we'll be focusing on, and it would be very nice and good of us if we became a part of that, so we could actually open up those doors. And I think you would see a great, a great work that can come out of this to help continue to push Patrick County forward.
Okay. We all have that resolution. I'll just read over it quickly, and then we'll take action. It says, "The Board of Supervisors, Patrick County, in order to further economic development and tourism in Patrick County, the Virginia American 250 Commission was created in 2020 by the General Assembly for the purpose of preparing for and commemorating the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participation in American Independence." And it has requested each locality to form a committee for the commemoration, and therefore, we will form a local VA 250 Committee, and it will plan and coordinate programs within the locality and communicate regularly with VA 250. And we wish to undertake, we, the Board of Supervisors, wish to undertake that with VA 250. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby desires to support the American 250 Commission in their efforts to commemorate the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participation in American Independence. Therefore, we will form a committee to aid in the planning, adopted this 21st day of November. Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll move.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Mr. Simmons? Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Darwalt? Mr. Perry? And I vote aye also, so it is adopted. Thank you. All right.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. And looking for great things again for Patrick County. All right.
All right, thank you. You have that right for me? Okay, Mr. Mark Vernon.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm here to give an update on the Public Service Authority. We've been focusing on a few things here since I've taken Hailma as the Executive Director: efficiency, transparency, accuracy, fiscally responsible, and being responsible with our resources. And to that end, I'll give you some highlights of the PSA's activities for the calendar year. We have amended some bylaws. We updated to include seven directors on our board. Basically, we've got the five magisterial districts, and then we'll have a citizen-at-large and Board of Supervisor-at-large. We've updated our mandatory connection policy. We've adopted general business policies and development rules and regulations. We've developed new service agreements, landlord authorization forms, service request forms, service turn-on forms. And currently, all new customers of the PSA are coming into the PSA offices to sign up for accounts rather than going over to the town of Stewart. We've adopted, we have adopted new monthly service rate schedules, connection and tap fees, miscellaneous rates and charges schedules. All of those were adopted in July and became effective in August of this year. schedules. All of those were adopted in July and became effective in August of this year. And I might add that there, all of those rates are currently posted on our website. So you can go there and see, uh, all of our current rates. Um, we're following delinquent accounts very closely now, uh, making notifications on delinquent payments and following up as needed. And those efforts have greatly increased our, uh, collecting on those delinquent debts, which was something that had been lacking quite a while. Um, something that's been on the PSA's, um, mind, and I know the Board of Supervisors has had some action on this as well, is getting all of the PSA water and sewer lines integrated into the county's GIS website. Uh, we are about to wrap that up, hallelujah. Uh, and hopefully in a couple of months, we'll have those, uh, PSA water and sewer lines visible on the county's GIS. Uh, we get a lot of calls in the office from potential customers, and I've had them from all over the county, wanting to know, is PSA services available in this area? So we hope, once we get this stuff on the website, it'll be an easy tool for citizens to use and see whether those services are available. Um, we've been investigating, uh, large water loss discrepancy between, between what the town of Stewart fills us at their master meter, which is located in, uh, Walmart along Route 58, which feeds all of the waters towards Patrick Springs. There's been, uh, I've been tracking water usage from our customers at their meters totaling every month for probably the last 13 to 14 months. And they had been averaging a difference of 250,000 gallons of water per month. Difference between what the town of Stewart bills the PSA through their meter, as to what the PSA has been billing the, uh, our customers at their meter. And I am, uh, glad to report that through a lot of investigation, we have gotten that cut down to less than 100,000 gallons, which is within some acceptable limits. And a lot of that had to do with misreading some meters and using some wrong multipliers on some larger meters. So that's very important, uh, right there because everything that we have recovered, that difference, that 150,000 gallons, is actually fillable water to our customer, which has helped our revenue as well. Um, and we've asked, recently, we have asked, uh, Patrick Springs Volunteer Fire Department, Stewart Volunteer Fire Department, and Moorfield Store Volunteer Fire Department, who we know frequently uses a PSA system to train for their firefighting activities, or field trucks, field tanker trucks. So we've asked them to help us in our efforts to, uh, be more, uh, keep up with our water usage, because what they use is un-metered. They use it at a fire hydrant. And, and I think they're going to take on that challenge, which will further, you know, cut our loss. Um, so back to revenues, uh, through some rate increases that we've done and through cutting our losses in this water discrepancy, um, for, um, this year, through this year, through October of this year versus October of last year, our revenues are up about 35%. So that, that's turning it in the right direction. Uh, upcoming this year, still things to do. The PSA is going to be starting to do their own billings. And we have started that process. Uh, we have contracted with the software providers that we need to do that. They are in the process of integrating their softwares. Um, and we have the hardware meter reading equipment that will be delivered at the end of this month. Uh, we will probably take a couple of months to train, make sure we're reading meters properly, and we're going to parallel our billings with the town of Stewart's billings to make sure we're doing everything right. We hope to, uh, go it on our own march with the PSA doing their own. Um, we've got a cross-connection control plan that I think we're going to have to update due to some new regulations. That is basically just backflow prevention between our customers and our system. Uh, there's potential for contaminant to backfeed from a customer into the PSA system. So we want to make sure everything is properly controlled, there are proper backflows on all the customer systems. So an update to our CCCP will be, that will be coming. And in the, we do have, currently have an ordinance. The county has adopted an ordinance, ordinance for that. So that will be something that we'll see, you know, probably several as well. Um, since we're taking on our own billings, we will be needing to adopt an identity theft policy, uh, to keep in, uh, uh, conformance with the, uh, Rule 16 through the Federal Trade Commission. So that will need to be done. Um, mandatory connection policy, as I said, was updated. And in the process of doing that, we have discovered that when they finished this sanitary sewer line, the mandatory connection notifications were never made to the potential customers. So that's something that we're in a process of doing now. Um, I'm needing, having to field verify all of the sewer connections versus what was shown on record drawings before we make those notifications. Uh, there was something like 120 connections shown on the record drawings, and there are only 54 customers connected currently. So that sewer system is, uh, greatly underutilized. So we will be making, uh, notifications to our customers in our service area of our mandatory connection policy. And we hope that will, um, stimulate people to make these connections. What that will mean, they will be abandoning their septic systems and hooking onto the PSA system. Uh, so that's, that will be a long process, but we will get it. Um, also, since we're doing our own billings, we'll need to be working with the town of Stewart to amend and update a PSA and the town locality agreement. Uh, currently, they do our readings, our billing, so just need to update. Um, maintenance is a big priority. Just to give you some numbers, we've got 10 miles of water lines, 10 miles of sanitary sewer lines, almost 65 hydrants, close to 90, um, water valves. We have five sewer pump stations, almost 160 sewer manholes, and all of this requires maintenance. Uh, that's something that has been deferred for quite a while since the system is built. Fire hydrants need to be, uh, routinely exercised to make sure that they're operating properly. We don't want the fire, uh, the fire department to go out there and need the hydrant and it's not operating. Uh, we, we have right-of-way that needs to be mowed. All of our gate valves need to be exercised to make sure in, that we need them to isolate a vein that they are operating. So, uh, maintenance is a big issue. We work with the town on that, uh, but we need additional help on it as well, uh, maybe from our maintenance department, because it's a big, it's a big item to take. So I, I think the total asset value of the PSA water and sewer lines, we're looking at probably around $12 million worth of infrastructure that has to be maintained. Capital improvement projects, I did give our, the PSA board a list of capital improvement projects, just to get it into their mind, of possible future expansion of the PSA system. Uh, there's about seven projects on that list. And, um, six of those projects were projects that were already designed but were deferred probably in 2014 and 15 due to some funding issues. So those are out there for their review. Uh, we would like to see the PSA expand. I think it's important for this county, uh, water and sewer infrastructure, economic development, need those services. That's what drives it. So the projects are out there for, to look at, uh, to be aware of, to, like, to expand. And with that, I'll just say, I keep, we keep our webs, webpage updated. It's department page. And so you can go on there and you can see our policy. You can see our rates, uh, any announcements that we have. So, uh, we keep, um, directors meeting minutes up to date. As soon as they're approved, the next day, they go on to our webpage. So with that, I'm done. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to notify the public that there are grant funding, grant funds available for PSA expansion. So are the forms on the website, the different forms for citizens?
For citizens?
Yes.
For what?
Are they on your website where folks can print off from the web?
Oh, yes. This, like, the agreement forms and cer-, oh, yes. We have them, we have them on there. And, uh, new customers are taking. Everybody likes to use the website and have that. And it makes it convenient for us.
I have a question. What was happening with the water here in town?
It's my understanding that the town did have a water leak and it was very close to their water treatment plant. And they have difficulty with their old gate valves. And they have a break isolating a section of vein. So what they had to do was turn off tire system, town, like that repair.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I would like to tell you that we're going to be on YouTube, right? Yep. We finally got the stuff working up there. And, uh, so excited moving forward, making it easier for you to see the proceedings, uh, those who are not here. All right, Sheriff Smith and Morgan Booth.
Most of you, all of you have this ready?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, as you all know, uh, last spring, uh, one of my deputies was attacked in the courthouse. And, um, that spurred, um, renewed interest in, um, security enhancements at the courthouse, uh, Circuit Courthouse, um, Blue Ridge Street in Ames. Judge Brinks ordered a security assessment done by the United States Marshal Service, their Judicial Security Division. Um, that was completed by, by the 19th of this year. They have a recommendation they have made. Um, in a nutshell, it's focusing on ingress and egress, security of those, uh, of those two items. Security with exterior windows, um, enhancement, security glass, uh, alarm system, glass breakage, uh, sensors. But probably the two main aspects of this plan are security doors once you get into the clerk's office. As, as most of you know, when you go into the portico now where the security deputy is seated, where you go through metal detector, um, there's a doorway that leads up a couple of stairs that goes into the clerk's office. And that's the only access the public has. But that access is restricted. Um, it's very narrow and there is no door. You either go right clerk's office or left and up to the judge's, uh, chambers, courtroom. There are no doors at either of those locations. That's two major concerns that could have prevented, um, if this person was able to overpower the deputy and get by him, uh, which they were not able to do, they could have gone straight up to the judge's chambers. Court is not stationed, it's not available upstairs. So he had zero protection at that point. Uh, the ladies in the clerk's office had zero protection. We have to, uh, stop that according to this report and it's common sense, basically. So purchasing security doors that are, that are security coded, um, with a key fob, uh, for, um, twite, uh, access, then probably the most cost, um, most cost-sensitive portion of this plan is actually extending the wall, moving the wall, so you've got a wider area so people can get in and get out of the courthouse bars if something serious happens. No public service area where the public can come in, um, to talk to the clerk at the window. They have to go into the building, which a lot of the stuff could be handled at the service desk. So if you look at it, uh, there's a picture on the page. But you see the hallway here, um, page seven. This is where the attack happened, right here. Uh, the person tried to go up the stairwell, deputy's plan, um, grabbed the person at that point. Uh, that's when the assault happened. See there, there's a door to the left right here that goes up to the courthouse, judge's courtroom, into the judge's chambers, the security door there. And this, this window right here, or this door, whole frame of the wall will be moved about five more to the right to have a wider area. And there would be a, uh, access door, security door there to go into clerk's office, and also a window, a service window for ladies clerk's office. Another key component to this, uh, plan is adding additional cameras, which the existing, uh, infrastructure there, the existing, uh, camera system there has about seven more, uh, pods available on the actual server, areas on the server to be able to support, uh, that many camera systems. But that's a relatively. Ultimately, what this is going to take, I do think, uh, discussing Ms. Hazelwood, um, that our maintenance can perform a portion of this. Help relieve some costs, but as far as structural changes, we're, we're going to have to get, um, special contractors. That's kind of what this judge is. As you know, um, this isn't a situation where, um, say all this, this needs to happen, but now we're going to put it on the back burner. According to the Code of Virginia, the Circuit Court judge has complete control and autonomy over the courthouse. He says it's something that's going to be done security-wise. It has to be done. As far as physical security, that, that state of, uh, State Code of Virginia commands me to do that. As far as structure with the building, he says it has got to happen. This is a recommendation from the United States Marshal Service. Uh, Judge Brinks has looked at this and, uh, is satisfied with it. We just have to make sure it gets, uh, comes to action.
Um, I would just like to say, um, our safety really does end up in this. Um, so thank you for your consideration.
The need, not a want.
Do we have any questions? Do, what is our action for this? It's just something we're going to have to do?
We have.
All right. So, okay. Thank you for sharing this report and helping us understand it, but we will get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the ARPA request. All right. Do we have any questions about this? Anybody have a question?
Hey, do you use the ARPA funds for ownership?
Yes. Everything considered.
Been, been that $74,000 fee or something like what Danny was just talking about? Been that $74,000 fee or something like what Danny was just talking about?
The increase, the roof repair on number four and number five, is that? Why is that? Is that because we, it's the timing, like it's taken longer to get it done?
Yes, beginning of the year.
So the price of material?
First estimate.
No.
Also.
Now is that, sorry, one more question. That because we didn't take action quick enough or we're waiting on them to do the job?
The action to be approved, but it's time for us to get our three quotes from other locations. The way we do is we approve first, then voting for the part.
Well, we've already chosen who's going to do it. So the, it didn't increase by the time we chose them until now, right?
No one else?
No one else.
I guess my question was just to make sure that it wasn't the fault of the contractor. So we could, you know, say, hey, we made that decision.
It was our time of getting, trying to get other quotes in house.
All right. Do, do we want to take this one at a time or do we want to do it as a whole?
Uh, there's, firstly, Mr. Chairman, there's one that I won't vote for, so if you would like to put one at a time.
All right. Uh, we'll do the holiday bonus. Do we have a motion to do this?
Motion.
Can I second? Second. All right, let's, uh, let me just say, this is not a big bonus. And it's really just saying to the county employees that we appreciate them. So I would be in favor of it. All right, Mr. Simmons?
Ah.
Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Starwalt?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
I, I agree with you, ah.
And I, thank you. The self-service portal timesheet. This is, can somebody explain that? This is really going to be a big help.
Big.
Several. This is an online, they just, the top of the app, it's an annual package that will allow. And go to there and request.
Yeah, and it would help, right. And it would help with the leave, you know, if they requested leave, it would be, and, you know, they'd know it. I do have a motion to.
Well, one more question.
Sure.
Will that be on all departments in the county?
It can be right. We, they can be offered every department without an additional cost or price.
I think if, I think if we're going, think if we're going to do it, it ought to be all the departments.
Well, we can't mandate treasurer's office because Commissioner Preven.
No, we can on the county employees.
Yeah.
Right, that's all county employees.
Yeah, all the county that we control, it would cover. Yeah. Any other question? Did we get a motion?
Oh, my.
All right, second. Thank you. All right, Mr. Simmons?
Ah.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Uh, Ms. Starwalt?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
I vote I also. All right, PSA billing, software meter reading equipment.
I'll speak a little bit. For next to PSA billing and now, we're retiring this person, attorney office, to be able to take in the. Efficient software we need to have programmed for current software to speak to treasurer's office. And that way, when someone comes into treasurer's office to make a payment, make a favor, tax bill or double ice, or GSA bill, to get a person. Dedicated time to say, to be taken easy.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion?
I'll make the.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Ah.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Ms. Starwalt?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
I vote I also. We got EMS increased roof repair. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Ah.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Ms. Starwalt?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
And I vote I also. And now the increased roof repair, county administration, have a motion?
I'm.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Simmons?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Would it be worth it to try to look at this again since it's went up like that and send it back out or no? I would, I just, I don't.
You must, it's already been signed.
No, I'm talking about the one for the county administration.
We can.
Yeah, I mean, do you think there's a chance it would be worth it? $20,000?
Well, I know it went up 20,000 and I don't know if it would continue to go up. At this point, I don't really know. If it's the pleasure of the board to put it back out, certainly.
And it's been leaking for a long time, hasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Looking for.
Yeah, and we've approved to do, we've approved to do the roof repair here on the building. This is just in addition to that cost where they did increase due to timing, as stated earlier.
Probably like everything else, inflation.
Yeah, they keep going.
Try to put it off any longer.
Yeah.
So if we approve this, this increase, I mean, we're going to get on this now though and not take a chance on it going up anymore, right?
No, it won't go up anymore. This is approved forward.
So.
Ah.
Thank you. Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Ms. Starwalt?
Ah.
Ah, Mr. Perry?
Ah.
I vote I also. All right, we have the civic plus website, site creation. I think this is pretty neat stuff. Anybody want to speak to it?
Pretty neat.
Yes, needed. What, what are some of the advantages we'll see with this?
So I can't. President of the vice county, they.
Okay.
Other options, other products.
Yeah. I think if, if we do this, we'll have a much, much, much better website, more informative and easier to change.
And that was one of our goals too.
Right.
That has stayed approved.
Absolutely.
We definitely need improvement.
Yes, we do.
I agree.
Yes, we do. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Ah.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Ms. Starwalt?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
I vote I also. Okay, so those are approved. And we have the RFP progress.
Yes, so first up on that, the Air Act dam, we did interviews, see the bids, of course, and then did interviews with the top two candidates, Mark Vernon and myself. And we would like to award bid to Schnebel. They were the first that we interviewed and also top choice, of course. But we had to choose to as RFP, so we've done that. We'd like your approval on that this evening. Mark is here, still with me. If there's any questions you have specifically about the process in which we're about to do it with a professional engineer.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
I had no idea that it's. So this is definitely earning.
All right. Anybody else have a question or comment? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make that motion to the awards, snake contract.
All right. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Simmons?
Ah.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Ms. Starwalt?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
I vote I also. Right, next?
Okay, so we've taken care of the website design with the ARPA fund. We have Mr. Sam Erby here to talk about the insurance RFP up and coming. The other RFP that we had out was for the waste disposal, hauling and disposal of our waste here at the county transfer station. And we had Thompson Trucking, McGraw Trucking, First Piedmont, Republic Services. McGraw came in finally as our lowest bid, but the concern that we have, myself and staff in reviewing, is that their fuel surcharges, they kind of hop around. And so I don't know that this number would definitely stay as is presented to us tonight. So really, the lowest bidder then would be for us, Republic Services. But we have a really good working relationship with Thompson Trucking, who is just a little bit higher than Republic Services. And they've been servicing us for quite some time. They work with waste management for to haul and dispose of our waste. But again, if, if you're looking to the, to the bidder at, at this time, I think if you have any questions, if you're unsure tonight about which one of those to choose, if you'll field those questions my way, we will look into and be happy to go back to the bidders and have any questions that you may have answered.
Okay. Do we have any questions that we, I think we'll table this. So if you have any questions now?
Please field them my way now or call me, email me and let me know what your concerns are with this. Because, you know, when the fuel surcharge kind of goes up and down every day, that changes the bottom line. And, and so we want to make sure that, you know, we're not necessarily not lowest bidder, but we don't want to do the lowest bidder and then it go up substantially in the middle when we've already signed a contract. We do that. But again, we do have a good working relationship with Thompson Trucking. And again, they're not that much higher than Republic Services, but Republic Services is beating for our business. And they've given us a really great price. And, and it is all inclusive, the prices as listed now, those are inclusive prices. We had to go back a couple of times, back and forth. So if you have questions or concerns, please, please give me a call.
What, what does it mean on here? Republic Services says on here, no, no fuel surcharge.
It's all included in their price. It is in there and it is not going to change. It is steady, which puts them in again as our lowest, our lowest bidder. And in our mind and talking with staff, we feel like that would be a good way for us to go.
Because Thompson, Thompson's got a few bus fuel charges.
They do.
Well, when you had some problems last year with them not being able to keep up with demand on dumpsters.
Yes, that and the trucks too.
That hasn't changed much.
And, and having the truck.
We'll bring that back up at the.
December, December 12.
December?
Yes.
All right. Okay, we have the handbook updates. Is somebody going to speak to?
Um, these were just updates that basically is that as things arise with employees or I get questions, clarification, sometimes it seems easier to just add to the existing policies or replace policies. So as things have arisen, these are policies that I found.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any questions, Donna?
The one, the one where you had an inclement weather. Well, we thought we shouldn't go with what the school system goes.
We don't. No, sir.
Well, I know we used to.
We changed that, we changed that policy.
What is it, what is it now?
Uh, well, so right now, Ms. Hazelwood will make the decision on whether she will follow, have maintenance go out and check the roads. Um, I think there are times when you follow it. But, um, most of the time it's just to check the roads and check with the employees. She will notify Melissa Taylor, unnotify the.
Well, I know used to they went with the school system. That wasn't quite fair because school system could be out because of weather on the mountain, not down here.
Right, right. So we no longer follow.
We have people traveling all the way from Galax to work every day.
Well, I can see letting her go home, but, but not shut, but not shut the whole county down.
But she comes, so we're, you know, we tell her not to, she does.
Like I said, I could see that point. Anybody that lived on the mountain should be able to go home, but not shut the whole county down just because.
We no longer, we no longer follow that policy.
Good.
I appreciate the, uh, the three hour tardy where, so if that gives them time to let DDOT do its thing.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve these changes?
Make the motion to approve the short term.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Simmons?
Ah.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Ms. Starwalt?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
I vote I also. All right. So we're through with new business, believe it or not. Uh, old business, Mr. Sam Erby.
Thank you.
That's a hot seat for you, Stane.
Uh, thank you for having me. I appreciate all allowing me to come in. Since the last meeting, Jerry, Donna, Dr. Lush, I've expected this quite a bit. I think the feeling is probably kind of let the thing sit where it is, stick one more year and then try to maybe forward. As I said in the, in the written material that you have, we'll support you all any way you want to go. But make a change, make a change. We didn't have a two quote. I wonder if we could decline all quotes, turn around and do that again. But I think looking at where we are right now, it's the run eight, that would involve the destiny, trying to change things around at county's best. Open claims, things, but that aside.
Well, it'd be nice if we had an option both ways where we all know, because we don't know, I'm speaking. I said it'd be, be nice if we had an option where we'd know it all the way, because we don't, we haven't been informed of what's going on, what's put out for RFP and nothing else.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. You've got an anthem fully insured quote that's a couple of hundred thousand dollars less than the BPA quote right there. Difference is fully insured is just, they didn't have great claim, we didn't get great claim, BPA, where they tried to separate. And the. And the county, they have since told me they've got that correct, able to get any first school separated, RAC, first school stuff. The fully insured offer costs a couple of hundred thousand less for you. Right now, y'all are budget. I think that you are being helped somewhat by the school, larger population, right now. The BPA, Jefferson Health, who's adjusted county, right out. Right now, you have a deficit that you can move man to share of that. As I said, we've got one-third of the employees, pay one-third of the deficit. Would mean you pay five thousand dollars, try to buy one, you pay that off back to Jefferson Health. And in addition to that, you could have some claims run out that would shoot out September on into next year, but the bulk of them come in the first couple of months. They would run you another hundred thousand dollars, college program cash. It's going to make it very difficult. Not difficult to tell me how many, but it's going to always make it difficult to make that change. Another thing you've got to keep in mind is, the Jefferson Health plan is saying, this is what we think costs coming based on the claim. Anthem, on the other hand, is looking at just what claim information they have in that manual rate, and will pull into this, but then we'll back. Pretty sizable. If Jefferson Health plan expectation claims held true, then they're going to have to come back. Kind of like biting the.
What, what, do we have any say-so about what part of it, like the people, what part of the premium they pay? I keep hearing that this year, always going to have to pay nothing, premium. Is that what we're looking at?
I hadn't heard that.
No.
Sounds good, though.
Yeah, it does. It sounds great.
Employees always, always pay a portion.
Oh, I think, I think the county can do something different with what you pay towards employee cost versus schools, because y'all can plop it and do what you want to do. That's
We need to know, and know ahead of time. Last year, we got pushed up right to the deadline. Didn't have much choice to do anything. We need to know that. And I've got a problem. I mean, I know I've talked to one on the school board that was expecting this year, for me not to have to pay no part of the premium. I got a problem with that, because I draw social security, and I pay about a third of my social security back from mine.
Well, I've never been on. Nobody strikes a gun. Of employees not paying something for the coverage. They need to know. When you lose sight of the cost of the program, and really easy to do surveys and things, find out that employees have no idea that it costs seven hundred dollars a plan, that the employer is paying six hundred and ninety dollars for that, and they think it costs ten dollars or, oh, they know they've got a good deal, they just don't have a good at the time.
I've had a lot of people ask me about it. I just want to make sure that people know what's going on.
Exactly. And I think it's very important for everybody to always understand, health is, he gets.
I think they, them, well, I don't know, but it may be coming from the schools, because they can do whatever they want to as far as funding what the employees pay. But for us, we're not going to, we have to charge something to the employee. And so really, right now, we're just sort of deciding whether to go with one of these two bids. We haven't gotten down to the nitty-gritty, Brett.
Right, right. Yeah, they, to get to the nitty-gritty for the school, they're going to get that proposal, and end of January, we actually propose, I mean, we got a commitment, Jefferson Health, by the first one. But we should have those numbers right then. At that point, I can bring those numbers back and say, okay. And how much of it do you want to pay? Y'all can sell what you pay.
But right now, in order to separate ourselves, separate from the school, you're saying it would cost about 1.7 million, you include hundred thousand.
Yes. That's.
Want to make sure I understand it correctly?
It is, trust me.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't think that's valid.
So we really don't need to vote, just move forward with.
We just, with the school, one more year, as Sam recommends, based on the number, based on 1.7 million, that it would cost us to separate ourselves at the time. That's what we're looking.
Okay, so.
Well, we don't have to make that decision even tonight.
You do not have.
No, we're just letting you know where we are and what our options are.
What we would do is go back and decline all quotes, and y'all look at it again in February, and.
Do they, do they base their proposals on previous claims? Is that how they?
Absolutely. The previous claims drive, always drive off for any group that has over fifty. The under fifty employees, the Affordable Air Act, 2014, a non-underwritten thing, based on the MSA, Metropolitan Service Area, that you look at everything over fifty.
Alright, any other questions? We'll look forward to seeing you January, February.
Alright, that sounds great. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Alright. Alright, Scotty.
I have the hot first.
Hey.
Got a couple things tonight. First, we had bought before you a while back, the auto-launch program. We'd like to. Fantastic questions y'all may have on that, that need happen.
Yes, it was lovely to see you guys again. Just as a quick reminder, I work with Airlife Virginia. We are the air medical company based at the Blue Ridge Airport. These tools, these resources I'm speaking about today are completely free. They're at no cost. They do nothing but benefit the first responders within your community. The auto-launch program is already in use by Martinsville and Henry County, Rockingham County as well. It basically allows the 911 dispatcher, when the tones go off, a tone associated with a certain call, mean, you know, NVA rollover, some entrapment, fall from thirty feet, anything along those lines, we are automatically heading to the aircraft and getting ready to launch. In that case, it just really helps us get to the scene faster. If you don't need us, you can cancel us or wake Forest Baptist, and it is at no cost. We'll turn around. If anything, it just helps us get to the scene faster. The Aircom app is a resource for 911 dispatchers. It allows them to not even have to pick up the phone to launch these aircrafts. They can also track them to the scene and also track them to the receiving facility, so they can give real-time updates to the first responders on scene. They're allowed to chat with our dispatch system. I actually went and showed it to a few of the dispatchers, and the chat function is something they're extremely hopeful for, because it allows them to be able to get live updates from their first responders, give them to our dispatch via the chat, and our dispatch can relay them to our crews real-time while they are flying to the scene. So in reality, they both just allow our crews to get there faster and more well-informed. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, do we have any questions? Go ahead.
No, ma'am. We are not, we are community-based, so we are not associated with any hospital program. We're purely there because there is not a trauma center within two hours. No, ma'am, we're actually in network with all major insurance carriers in the United States, so when you fly with us, you pay your copay or deductible. Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am. Your insurance, so if you are insured, you pay your copay or deductible, and we have a pre-negotiated rate with the insurance company. So you only pay your copay or deductible. Our average out-of-pocket for the nation is $200. If you're uninsured, you pay nothing. You wouldn't pay us anything anyways. If you're insured, you wouldn't have to pay anyone. And if you're uninsured, you don't, it doesn't cost anything for us. Yeah, of course, and I'm happy to give you a card, and if you have any other questions, I can send you any additional information. With the No Surprises Act, the billing for air medical has completely changed.
Do we have any questions on the board? I like the sound of three. Do we have a motion to move forward with this?
Make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Starwell?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
I vote aye also, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Second item up, we've all discussed, and we had a meeting with the captain. As Mr. Simmons asked me to have, I was candidate, there's four agencies that are definitely interested, all four represented tonight, with the exception of Smith River Investor, who are with us regardless of where they decided to go. One way or the other, station eight. So I guess first need to vote for candidate one or the other, that's what it is. Only the other eight. That's alright. So, that was current, that was.
So you're asking to approve for those three, since the others don't do it? Okay. Alright, uh, anybody have a question? Understand the motion? Alright, do we have?
I make a motion to approve for the stations that want to.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Starwell?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
I vote aye also.
A couple more. Talking with the situation, we're wanting to form an ESAC, purchase service of visors and fitting. That is where all the agencies would together, if they needed capital improvements, they would get together, hash out, who got it and all that, and it would send it to board. It keeps everybody from firing, by barring the board with things, all firing, come through the ESAC. Time, time. Y'all louse.
Who, who, share with you, you don't think?
That would be the chief captain. Uh, Henry County has a similar policy. They let all the chiefs and captains, they end up bargaining all the time to probably. With that, probably administration or the. We're going to keep the same rotation. It ain't going to change the rotation or anything that we're doing now. It's just, before we had so much issue with what is capital improvements or capital expenditure, it helps us, the agencies decide before we bring it to board. So there's no inner fighting or anything like that.
Alright, do we have a motion to set up that committee?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons? Uh, Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Starwell?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Last item, and we all know this, I'm asking for full personnel to finish out this second. Half the second. We currently have one shift that has trucks running 24 hours. Our troops finally graduated. The last one to win in service has a second. The way I can hire somebody more, that leads. You can tell how much it cost. We're about halfway through the year. You know how much it cost? I mean.
That's a five.
It was 500,000 for the whole year, so we're almost half the.
Yeah, but if we do this now, then next year it'll be 500,000. So that's.
It'll be.
And I know we.
Okay, that's, that's. I'll go with the feeling of the board. I think we may have to table this for.
Three. For information.
Yeah, I think we probably need. Thank you, thank you. Alright, Mr. Atkins.
I'm not asking any money, so.
Yay.
Couple of updates to begin. Kind of the biggest, most exciting one, at least from my side, is Apco and River Street have officially signed their agreement for the broadband for the 2022 award. So now they're in the regulatory phase, that we're expecting that to be done no later. I think construction right now is lined up to be in no later than basically September. So the regulatory period should be ending in August of 23, so we should be able to break ground, so to speak, for the broadband in September.
September 23. September 23.
Yes, yeah. So I blame Michael if Armbrister, they, but yes, that's exciting, so that lends well to also 23. Hopefully, if we get that award, hopefully that partnership continues. Put in a few tobacco commission applications. On the smaller side, we did one for the Free House Brewery at the Cochrane Mill Complex. It's the first time that the Tobacco Commission has done private, private kind of round of funding on the small level, so for capital improvements, up to $30,000. So hopefully we'll be able to receive that for their sake and continue that project. And the bigger application that we did for them was to basically gut the shell building, the former results building. So I know most of you know all that, some of this, but for the public's sake, to basically gut the building, it'll remove the dropped ceilings, remove the firewalls, and then put sprinklers in. So it'll, it'll be its true shell. So it increases its marketability for prospects, either ones that I've talked to already or future ones. So it puts us in position to really get that building filled. On the other side of that, try to keep the match as low as possible. We applied, we are applying to the federal EDA for actually all the matching funds for that. So if we're able to get the Tobacco Commission and then the EDA grant, it would essentially be zero dollars out-of-pocket for the county, for the EDA to outfit that. Yeah. And the, I guess the thing we need to talk about the most, of course, is the childcare situation with that project. In lieu of the school board's decision to potentially pave that road, or, excuse me, that grass lot, you still need to figure out the outdoor space for the, for the recreation for the kids. So in doing that, I talked to AECOM, told them that we're not likely to have that grass space. Been talking to VDOT about potentially doing a partial road closure on Ry Cove. That might be, instead of using it as a transportation, that we were going to set something up just to get the kids across the street, just using that small portion of the road should actually be enough space to cover that 75 square feet per child, or at least get, get us a lot closer to the number that we potentially didn't think we were going to. we were gonna hit, um, after that news. So, uh, essentially, how do I, I'll defer to at least, what do I need to have? Same thing, so. No, the, the. Yeah. So, it's, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but to push forward with that does not mean that it's. Done, or anything like that, just that we can proceed that way. Right. Yes. Right. So that's basically the, the request at this point.
But that wouldn't.
Right. Correct, yeah. And because there's so many access points, basically every other angle, that's why we felt as if this would. I mean, a partial road closure is still a partial road closure, but it wouldn't be, that's why I said, oh, not that, not the whole stretch, but just that little portion right there between the two buildings, so.
My question would be, you're saying 75 feet per child, but don't you have to have different playgrounds for different age group? So that would affect.
Not necessarily. Um, they usually do split them up, but, um, we went up to Rainbow Riders up in Blacksburg, and, I mean, naturally, they kind of, usually, I mean, for the bigger kids, they had just different times and obviously bigger equipment, but the age range would not be as, as high as it was for that. I mean, that's a massive operation, so probably not a good comparison, but, um. We're, we're not looking at 80 kids like we were before.
Right.
So, uh, I think it's a little more feasible to have that, um, happen, um, if this process, and if we can proceed with this, obviously we'll be talking with AECOM to make sure that we can truly figure it out, you know? And if it doesn't fit, then it doesn't fit. That's why I want to make sure that you guys, going forward with it, permission to go forward with the process, does not mean that it's okay, it's done, or anything like that. It's just really, all right, can we basically explore this path, if we can make this happen?
We're not at the point of public, right? Public notice, obeying.
Hmm.
Just making.
Yeah, I don't, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Or so.
All right.
There's a whole lot of other steps. This is just saying, hey, can we start, can we start the process of, you know, looking into it and doing that, so.
All right, I think, all right, we can take a motion to start the process. I would still, you know, this is just me, I'm still sort of bothered by where the kids would be dropped on.
And that's, and I understand that, um, and if you just look at it right now, there is no place for that. So, um, you know, and it's hard to kind of have that, uh, to, to kind of see that, that property and say, why would we put a childcare there? You know, or anything like that. Um, we wouldn't put childcare there right now. Um, you know, that's part of, you know, the, it's obviously gonna look a whole lot different, a whole lot of work done, and we're just at the beginning, but, uh, not to drop a guilt trip, but if we can't do this part of it, then unfortunately, we're probably gonna have to start over from scratch for the lower level, so, um.
All right, do we have a motion to, uh, at least continue the process, start the process, however you want to describe it? Right, do we have a second?
I ask a question first.
Sure.
Lisa, did you understand where he's talking about?
Uh, thank God, Slusher Street. Yes, that's Slusher, but. That, that. Slusher, Rocko. Uh.
Slusher to Rocker.
It'll be Rocko from Rocker to Slusher.
Yeah, shutting the hole up time.
We had three times fast.
Yeah, yeah, Rocker, Slusher, yeah.
So the, the only disadvantage to that would be coming off of Wood Brothers Drive. Uh, you could not take Ry Cove Road over to Main Street or even the new, or the new school board office.
Rocker wouldn't be closed. It'd just be to the, you could still turn in left and then up left.
And go upright, but you couldn't go from Wood Brothers Drive from Ry, take Ry Cove all the way over to Main.
But if you're coming from Wood Brothers, you could take a left.
All the way down and go up Main Street.
Or you could, or you could take a left at the light.
Put in Ry Cove, go all the.
Yeah.
Right.
Straight, yeah.
All right.
This is definitely, you know, pushable type of thing, you know, it's like, is that, is that as important as getting our county's first childcare? You know, not to like lay it on thick like that, but it's, it's.
Crazy question. Question. Oh, I'm sorry. Thinking.
Hmm?
If it's, if it's that important, and that's the most important thing over there, and that's gonna get the biggest majority of the traffic and importance there anyway, why would you not just flip flop, do your center on the bottom and do your daycare on top? And that, help, that just, doesn't that just make everything better now? And except for, you still gotta figure out the little playground part, but as far as traffic for kids and all that.
That, that can't be thrown aside that easily, because that's the biggest part of this.
What's that?
Is the outdoor space.
Well, yeah, I mean, either way, you got a outdoor space problem.
But if it's, if, if we get this road closure and it's on a lower level, it is right outside of it. So that's, that's, that, in my mind, that would be the easiest.
Um, that's what the design.
Yeah.
Company recommended, right?
Yeah, the lower levels, the childcare, it's closer to more.
And that was with the, wasn't that with building, uh, something inside so that people could go through the top and go down? And that what we talked about one time, like a staircase or something to get downstairs?
Uh, and that's not in the current plans? I don't know if that was for. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It's a problem taking kids downstairs.
Yeah, there's, it's pretty, and that was the issue, kind of getting them across the street, you know, obviously getting any group of kids anywhere. Speaking of somebody with no kids, but.
Any of the board could come see if the sign.
A hundred percent, yeah, I can send it to you.
So we really just taking a motion to look further into possibilities.
Thank you.
Right. So, all right, and we got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, Mr. Simmons?
Uh.
Mr. Kendrick?
Uh.
Ms. Starwell?
Uh.
Uh, Mr. Perry?
Uh.
And I vote aye also. All right, anything else? Thank you. Actually, I'd be honest, Mr. Simmons, I think I would prefer it that way, but that's me. All right. All right. The administrators report.
So, uh, in your packet, you have a copy of the board retreat synopsis from Mr. Charles Hartgrove, which is basically, we're heading into the second year of our strategic planning process, which we started last year with Charles Hartgrove at our retreat. So that is for your information, uh, take a look back at that when you have a minute, and, um, hopefully that's something we'll use to county forward. Um, the opioid settlement information that is in the packet is moving, uh, quite a bit. There's a policy and there's a resolution, and of course, they are asking for us to, um, obviously have them on our legislative affairs as we talk with our legislators that at the forefront, uh, along with, uh, funding for our second truck, I'll just segue right on into that, uh, any kind of federal funds, state funds we can, can get, we're gonna try to talk with our legislators about those things. Also soil and water conservation, um, Mr. Vernon and I have been talking quite a bit about that with regard to our dam safety projects, maintenance of those. Uh, we are non, um, nonexistent funding for maintenance through our soil and water conservation districts, so we definitely want to be talking with our legislatures about that this year. Just a few things to keep in mind, and if you have other things that you would like to send my way, um, that you would like for me to put together as part of our legislative affairs package, please don't hesitate to email that out to me, something you're thinking about. We'll get those approved December the 12th, get them to our legislatures, hopefully on legislative day, if not before, but when we come up to talk with them in January, and I hope everybody can attend, I'll send a copy of the calendar for the first month of the year of 2023, January, it is a very busy time with VACO, VML, and local government. It gives us our time with our legislators to go and represent Patrick County and the needs that we have for our system and our business here.
All right, thank you. I would.
Oh, I just have, just one more thing.
Sure.
If I may, I, I did go and take a tour at the New River Resource Authority, and when Ron Knight, of course, myself were there, we were talking with the executive director about having some type of an emergency agreement in place, uh, with the county. So if whatever our emergency is, it would become their emergency as a backup for the county. If we had to close the station, we'd have somewhere we could send our citizens, we could send our business, commercials, and so forth and so on. And so I wrote a letter, uh, to their board, to the New River Resource Authority Board, and it was approved last week, so we actually do have a place that we can take our, um, our waste in an emergency situation, $5 for residential and then $34 a ton for the commercial waste. And again, it's an emergency agreement only, um, at this time, and I did ask, uh, would they be willing to receive our, our waste disposal at some point? Uh, but at this point, that's not, not the case, so, and that's all I have.
All right. I would say, uh, you should look at your calendar for, uh, January, because things to the 19th is legislative, uh, meet our legislators.
Yes, January the 19th.
They also have during that same little period, uh, a, uh, seminar for chairs and, uh, vice chairs, and they have a rural.
Yes, the Rural Caucus.
Rural Caucus. So these are all really important and, and good, uh, chance to get to see our legislators. Um, and I hope, uh, we can all get there. All right, uh, supervisors report, Mr. Simmons? Okay, Mr. Kendrick?
Thank you, I was thinking I had with EDA and those stuff, stuff, it's good.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Starwell?
Uh, I attended Tourism Advisory Council. Mr. Couch touched on, I think, big. Which we're excited to be part of. Um, doing an excellent job, he and his staff at the Tourism Advisory Council on moving forward with grant app approvals, all the different things that are. So, the minutes are always on the website, you're always welcome to attend. Uh, I attended the US Piedmont Planning District Commission meeting in their county, uh, with a grant application, basically. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perry.
And so, uh, STEP met last week, and I missed that meeting, but, uh, they were issuing iPads to all the boards to help them work more efficiently, effectively. And they're also having a special meeting on the 28th to meet, um, their, um, criteria for grants, go over grants. Uh, Planning Commission met last week, and as they continue to work on their comprehensive plan, um, and, uh, Recreation, they had a special meeting at the end of October to mesh their schedule up with the school's schedule, so they, uh, elected not to meet in November, and then the Woolwind DeHar Park Committee, uh, met and continued to make improvements and, and grow the park there in Woolwind.
All right, um, I attended the insurance, uh, meeting, and then, uh, we had a Department of Social Services meeting, which they continue to have problems, uh, with staff, uh, getting good staff, keeping staff. Um, also attended the VACO, uh, conference, and one of the committees I'm on, uh, actually we had the, um, Commissioner of, uh, Social Services, and it's, it's statewide, they're, they're having problems, but they're considering ways of, uh, rectifying that and sending some money our way, we'll see, we'll believe it. Uh, but it was a great meeting, a great chance to get to, to see people throughout the, uh, the, uh, state, and they're gonna give us a presentation, I have to, we did have one project that was, um, uh, set aside, do you want to speak to that? No, that's all, you go ahead. Uh, anyway, they're gonna come here, they give us a plaque, uh, next, next time in December. Uh, and, let's see, what else? Oh, we are invited, uh, to be, uh, not only in our parade here, but also up in Madison Dan. We had a good time last year, froze to death, but, uh.
It was a lot of.
It was a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to that and also the parade here. Um, I think that's all. All right, we're at that special time. Yes. Oh, wait a minute, let me make sure. Yes, okay.
I move that we enter into closed session, go into section 2.2, 3711 of the Code of Virginia, to discuss the appointment of specific appointees to the Public Service Authority, Solid Waste Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, Department of Social Services, as well as the assignment, motion, performance, demotions, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of certain public employees, also, so into subsection A1, and to discuss the sublease agreement with the school division where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county pursuant to subsection A29.
All right, that's the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now moving into closed session.